Wendy Rathgaver.
Uh, Bill Larson, ex officio.
This is Kathy and so we'll sit Harry. Harry's turning. Uh, let's see, reviewing the chapters and minutes to January ninth meeting minutes.
I'll see some markups.
Yeah, I had a little one. Top of the second page it is, uh. The sentence starts on the first page, "The committee will meet, conduct interviews, and report back to the planning board with their, I would say, recommendations as per the results." I think that that's what they would do when they were recommending.
Which one is this, Harry?
It's the last sentence on the first page continuing on the first half.
Okay, got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Do we have a, um...
Any other comments on the January ninth meeting? Is left, do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Are you for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the January twenty-third meeting.
I had a little something on that. Number three, new business, first sentence. Wendy Rathgaver reports for the Transportation Committee which consists of herself, Kathy Chandler, Cindy Picos, and Nancy Knight. There's a preface there we should take out.
Okay.
And then change the and to on, on their meetings concerning the proposals received from, from the three firms for the RFP. So I would suggest that it reads, uh, Wendy Rathgaver reports on the Transportation Committee which consists of herself, Kathy Chandler, Cindy Picos, and Nancy Knight, comma, on their meetings concerning the proposals received from the three firms for the RFP. And... On the second page... Fifth paragraph, "Discussion followed." I don't know if I made myself clear, but it was my intent to say Terry Wade points out the need to justify, right here it says the price difference between the proposals and how best to justify the cost of the SE group being equal to the percentage of the increased value of the product. That, that isn't clear to me. What I meant to do was to say Terry Wade points out the need to justify selection of the higher priced proposal and how best to justify the added cost of the SE group being equal to the increased value of the end product. That was my intent.
Say that again. Selection of proposal.
Terry Wade points out the need to justify selection of the higher priced proposal and how best to justify the added cost of the SE group being equal to the increased value of the end product. What I was trying to say was if we're not taking the low bid...
Yes.
We should justify why we're not taking the low bid and how that difference is going to be equated to the final outcome. In other words, that the outcome will be that much better.
Better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a little something in the very final paragraph of section three to last page. Bill, I'm glad you're here. What are you officially calling your master plan for town core? Is it the pedestrian village revitalization concept?
I do not have a, a title on that.
We don't call it that?
Call it what?
If we don't call it that?
It's going to be challenging to change it at this date because I believe it's already gone on the warrant article.
No, no, not ours, Bill's concept.
Oh, I don't care, he can fill up whatever he wants.
This last paragraph is about the... It's just about the Waterville Company's pedestrian village revitalization concept and I just want to continue to avoid any confusion between the two.
Right. Oh, okay, yeah, the, good point, yeah, I don't...
Um...
It is not theirs. I mean, we're calling it that.
Core development?
Core development plan?
Yeah, that, that's what I think they were kinda...
Okay.
Well, their, their plan that they're presenting is their plan, is it not?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's just called the same as our subcommittee.
No, I, no, I, no, I...
In the minutes, I just wanted to change that.
I get it, but, um, they kinda invented it and proposing it. I don't care what the name is, but I just make them sure that, yeah, we stole their plan.
We stole their name and now we're not letting them have it.
Pretty much. Sounds nice about it. The core development plan, is that what it is?
I think that's what we referred to.
Yeah.
That's good, but you know, we're not redeveloping any of this stuff.
Right.
She said develop.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Right.
I hear core development. I can't turn them on.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then it's passed. Uh, just before we get into the meeting, I guess I should give, I should give you a little update on the January twenty-second meeting. Bill has withdrawn his, uh, his, uh, participation in the twenty-second meeting and we had several discussions that started out with some comments about whether or not the planning board should present their warrant article. And it was decided that we would not present the warrant article at the, at the twenty-second meeting. Twenty-second, yeah.
Yep.
And so then my, my response was then I, I wasn't comfortable with the planning board hosting it, so we agreed that the town would host it because it's, I didn't want the planning board in a position that looked like we were approving it. And it was, my concern was we had such a nice drawing, people are gonna accept that and, and if the planning board hosted it, it would appear, may, may appear to some people that it was approved. So the town agreed to host it and Bill was gonna kick the meeting off and then Bill was, drew his participation, so I guess we're gonna cancel the meeting.
The meeting is, uh, been canceled.
Been canceled.
Oh, it has, okay.
Nate, you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, why...
I think this is a real, I pulled communication between all of us.
You know, I was just telling a big group last night who asked about it...
They pardon me?
That, that they should go to find out about it.
Well, we, we've published it in a number of different places and we'll unpublish it.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, why, why?
But, I, I think there's, I'd like to think we continue to all have the same goals and purposes. The, the, I thought there was a huge confusion between the SE plan and the, uh, purpose of passing, trying to, trying to get past the transportation plan warrant that, that you folks have on the, on the, uh, on the town warrant.
Pedestrian village revitalization.
Don't be calling names straight.
Yeah, but we really don't wanna refer to it as transportation because that's what crapped out last year.
But, but if, if that warrant article's only gonna be published by the voters at town meeting, what's the purpose of holding a community-wide meeting and attempting to get all the second homeowners to show up? That was the first basic question that I had that I didn't really know. The reason why I thought we were having the February twenty-second meeting, and I could be very wrong on this, my impression was the planning board was reluctant to even address any of the, uh, zoning issues that we think were, are gray until they see a greater support uh, from the community. Um, and I thought that was the purpose of the, the twenty-second meeting. And I've, I've shown that, uh, presentation a number of times and I think it's very good. I like the plan, I like the concept. Um, we've all looked at it, I think there's a certain level of enthusiasm for it. There's a whole bunch of questions that are raised when you put that plan up there. And for a lot of those questions, there aren't any answers. And I, I have become more and more convinced that presenting a plan like that to the whole community, um, and not having answers to a lot of the detailed questions, I think potentially is, is a mistake. And as you folks have discussed before, uh, relative to that plan, there's no decisions that anybody's asking anyone to make. There's no application in, we don't even, and, you know, there's no application on the immediate horizon that we can see. So the, the more I worked with my advisors on that, they said this thing's really gonna complicate the issues and what you, what we all need to focus on, particularly the town, is getting the transportation plan approved. They're attached at the hip. There's no question they're attached at, at the hip. A lot of the questions that need to be answered to do more detail work on the plan will come out of the transportation plan. So that's, that's where, that's how I ended up with that decision. Didn't make it lightly. I had also started trying to, to make sure people knew to come to the meeting on the twenty-second and I thought it was a mistake. I know Bill, uh, disagrees with me and, and maybe you too. And, and I think it, I, I feel very strongly that, you know, that there's some communication issues that have fallen between the cracks between us and that's a big reason why I made sure I was here this morning.
Hmm. So what's, what's your biggest worry? I mean, when, when people, like, like what's the biggest questions that people have that are unanswered that worry you?
I, I think, I think if you look at that plan from, as a, just a community member, you look at it at home, there's a lot of stuff on that plan and maybe it's a little scary. And because there's a lot of stuff there. And the, the, the big question is who's gonna build an aerial transportation system from now? How much is it gonna cost? What's the nature of it gonna be? Um, how much structure parking is it? Who's gonna pay for that? Do you pay for parking or do you park for free? What, how, how far is it from my car to the post office? Why are you gonna move that parking lot? Where's that parking gonna go? People don't like parking that far away. Um, uh, what's gonna, you know, there's just a whole host of those kinds of questions and I think a lot of those questions get answered. If someone has a specific proposal, hi, I'd like to build a hotel. I'd like to have some support for a, a parking structure because it's environmentally correct, it gets them out of the way, it's, it's, uh, it's out of the snow, it's immediately available. I need some help doing that. I propose a, that they're, they vary a public-private partnership of such and such a nature. And if the town would fund this much, that'll get repaid over this period of time in this, this way. Though, you know, until someone actually wants to do that, we don't have any answers to any of those questions. We need to educate ourselves. I think the transportation plan that you proposed is absolutely great and we start knowing what the alternatives are and we start, uh, educating ourselves so that when that happens, we have the ability to address it. But I, 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 I'm definitely afraid that those two things are gonna end up becoming a conflict and, and causing issues relative to the passage of the transportation.
I, I don't, I, I guess I don't, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm just thinking about how we kinda tackled the worries head-on and were trying to get at all the other worries like you were kinda bringing up and kind of hitting them head-on before people even ask.
Except I think there again, we're addressing the issues for our warrant article, but what Waterville Company would be presenting would be something that isn't even really concrete besides on a really nice piece of paper. And I think that's, that's the type of confusion that he's looking to avoid from what I understand.
Yeah, I, I have to say that, um, and I did attend one of the meetings and, um, I never took that as a proposal. I took it as an overall concept that I was sure was gonna change a few times and might not even look similar to what, so I just thought it was throwing out a concept of something that could be done as opposed to, you know, this is definitely gonna be here, but how do we fund it or how do we, whatever. So, 'cause I, I never thought anything that was there in that, um, in those, uh, plans was even remotely cast in stone. I thought they were just throwing out, throwing out ideas as to how something might look and we all agreed if something looked something like that of, in some way, it would be beneficial to the town. That's the only, that's the way I took it. Not, not as we're definitely gonna have a, a lift from town to the mountain or those kinds of things. I just, it may be a...
Let, let me, maybe I should add some additional information, all right? Uh, when, I think Ray and I, we got the email yesterday morning announcing this was going to be canceled, at least I read it yesterday morning, I'm not sure when it went out, uh, that they had decided to cancel the meeting. So I called Bill and, and I spoke to Bill about it and he suggested that I call, is it Bob Kane or?
Mark.
Mark Kane at the SE group. So I called Mark Kane at the SE group and said, okay, not gonna do the meeting on the twenty-second. Uh, what are we gonna do in, in terms of, you know, this got turned down last time, um, you know, as transportation studies, so we, we still need to do. And what he suggested and what we've been working on is we'll put together, as we had secondarily agreed, a, uh, presentation that would, would be set up at the side of the day of the voting that will go into warrant article four and in my mind right now, attempt to basically answer a series of questions relative to warrant article four. Uh, one of the que, the questions that I'm thinking at least of trying to address is how does the town do, and through that introduce the concept of the master plan because the master plan, if I went back and read it, really does envision something just like this. Now, it doesn't say so in many words, but you can get direct quotes out of there, out of that master plan that would suggest that development of a high-density core is, is one of the really good solutions. So we'll put together a presentation that addresses that. It addresses what is this thing called the pedestrian village and what is, why is it necessary to do the study now? Why should we do it now and, and not wait? You know, why do we have to do it ahead of time? And try to answer those questions in a handout form so the people who go for the voting would have a chance to at least get exposed to this prior to the meeting.
So we're not doing a presentation during the meeting?
You can't. I don't know how to do it. Well, yeah, you can do it. Ten, you're gonna have ten minutes. The moderator's gonna give you ten minutes. And in those ten minutes you absolutely can do a presentation, but it's gonna be tough in ten minutes to really cover this in any depth. So we're trying to get supplemental information so people don't get hit with it cold ahead of time. Um...
Because we've done a lot of work.
Now, I, it would not be my, it was not my first choice, but, uh, but then there is a positive that comes out of this if we try this route. One of the positives is we're gonna completely separate ourselves from that plan.
Right.
So we're now going to do our planning of what we think the center of town ought to look like and what the transportation ought to, and, and in a sense, we're not connected to that anymore. So in some ways, that's not a bad thing. And, uh, it just gives, I think, the planning board a little more latitude in terms of, because what, what we're trying to get out of this is what might the revised set of developmental regulations look like if we really wanna make this kind of a concept work. And, um, I, I think it just give us a little more latitude if, you know. So I think there may be a positive, although it wouldn't be my first choice.
But in putting together that presentation, it'd be nice to include the subcommittee because we've been...
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. No, I, I, as I said, I've got a draft and it, and, and we'll get it to Ray.
Because I had worked on a draft last night, too.
The SE group is going to come. They're, they're gonna, Mark will be here, um, at long because there's a selectmen there anyway, all day long. So between Mark and a selectmen and we can have others from the committee, we can be there to answer people's questions or whatever they have as they go through this. But to try to walk them through it individually in small groups.
So during voting all that day, there's gonna be a human there walking people through this information?
Right.
That's what you're saying?
Yeah, 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 there'll be at least one, if not several, human beings walking people through this. Uh, so as they have questions, the question's gonna be answered. Mark is committed to come for the, for the, for the, I think the voting starts at eleven in the morning. So he'll be there from eleven right on through town meeting.
And, and this is something we're gonna be talking about after this meeting? Because we were gonna be talking with Mark after the meeting.
Yeah, after the meeting. But what I had thought also...
I, I don't, I don't think he's prepar, I doubt if he's prepared to do that, but I don't know.
Yes, he is.
We, we were planning...
Yeah, we have...
We have a meeting scheduled to talk about this.
The, the subcommittee's been doing a lot of work, too.
Right.
But I was also thinking that in the meantime, why not get a mailer out to everybody? I started working on a draft last night.
Well, you gotta write, I mean...
I, I started working on it last night.
Oh, okay.
With the, with the subcommittee kinda grooving here.
Yeah, okay.
If at the town meeting or during that day, we're looking to separate ourselves from that concept, why are we having Mark there to answer some questions?
Mark is our guy.
He's our guy.
Oh.
Mark is our guy.
Oh, for our transport, for our study. Okay, all right.
Yeah, he's the one that we were scheduled to talk with after the meeting.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that the separation's a separation, you know.
Bill, did you have...
Who, who controls the amount of time that the moderator will give a warrant article for discussion?
Joint between the moderator and the selectmen. But typically, we're gonna, I, 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 it's, you're hard pressed to come up with a rationale why one, one particular thing deserves a half hour and everything else is limited to ten minutes.
Well, you, you do wanna make sure people understand the issues that are at stake.
Right, which is why I think it's probably necessary to do something ahead of time. Now, his suggestion, and I agree with him, is, is, and I went back and read it again, is you can tie all of this into the master plan. The master plan talks to a vision of the valley that is preserving the natural, you know, kinda natural beauty. It talks to the fact that all the remaining land is in the center of town, that we need to be careful in terms of how it's developed. Um, it talks to how important the health of, that the whole health of this community is tied to the basic, that skiing industry. And, and we need to be very, very, you know, we need to be careful in terms of making sure the health of the business community is viable. And, and many of those things get addressed in here. So I, I, I think, I think it'd probably work to, to try to tie it to the master plan.
I just feel like, I don't wanna seem like we're hiding things by not doing both because I think the reality is we're doing both. We're tying it to the master plan because if it didn't match our vision of the master plan, we would be at odds with
Right.
what they're doing. But it does and that's why we're doing this.
Right.
So I, I just don't wanna, like, and I'm wondering, d, does it, does it feel a little bit like we're hiding things from, because the rest of the town has not really seen what you're presenting?
But it's, it's not concrete is what I keep going back to. I mean, if there was an application, I would absolutely say spread it out everywhere.
Yeah.
But there isn't. And I don't have to black and white.
Yeah, I mean, it is just your thoughts.
The reality of the situation, though, also is, um, you know, with, um, economic changes or whatever that nobody can foresee, it is quite possible, probably not probable, but Waterville Company could sell all the land to another, different developer with a different vision and then we're here with some, I mean, we don't know any of that, I think is...
And that's why I think it's important that the study, because a lot of people are raising questions about why are we doing this now?
But that's a great point, actually, and something that really ties into why we need a, a point of view professionally done, point of view from the planning board.
And the, and the center is gonna get developed at some point, so we, we may as well have information to go forward with for ourselves, absolutely.
That's a great, we should add that to our presentation.
It's already in there.
Okay.
Right. And, and when you think about it, if, if you look at our current regulations,
Yeah, but we should make it really strong. I think it's a scary and really good point of...
It's gonna get developed the way it has been developed, which is individual, small little condo projects, you know, with associated attached parking. That's what's gonna happen because that's what the regulations allow. It doesn't encourage anything bold.
Yeah, either.
Can I ask a question, um, only because I haven't been here for a while? So, I'm wondering as a, let's say I wasn't a voter here, don't we, shouldn't we be at least notifying, and I'm not saying right off the bat, but at some point, letting them know what we're doing, even, their taxes are affected whether they vote or not.
Right.
And I think that they should know what's happening.
Well, I mean, if they're interested to know, isn't the warrant article just listed in, where, where does the town meeting information go? Is it just like the staff in the post office? Is there a way for people to get it online? I don't know.
I think it's on the website.
I think the warrant, the warrant we posted online.
I, I think we post them online generally and, you know, it's hard for second homeowners to pick this stuff up. A few, uh, will, uh, but most do not. Which was part of the, and the original thinking of doing this separate meeting is they'd be here and it, you know, but...
I know some of the people, uh, are, some of the homeowners that are weekenders or whatever, I don't know what term to apply, but, um, more of them are looking online for information now than I think ever before. I don't know what percentage, but I just hear people telling me that, that they keep abreast of some things by, uh, going to the website.
Can we highlight the warrant? Oh, who'd Mark, can we have Tom, your internet guy? Can we, is there a way to highlight the warrant articles or is, is there actually, Bill, is there something wrong with doing that? Can we not pull out one a warrant article over another?
Sure, we can.
I think that's, the whole warrant needs to be posted, but I don't think you can pull pieces of it out. I think it's, it's an entirety.
The, the, yeah, the warrant has, was just signed, so I don't think it's changed.
It was just signed, right.
Right.
But, but the dilemma is if you read the warrant article, it's very hard to understand. You, you're gonna, you're not gonna, well, what is this?
Yeah.
You really do need some explanation. You need some time to explain to people.
But could we tie in something else? Like if we were to write something, can we put that online, too?
Sure. If, you, you were suggesting you were drafting an article, you absolutely can, uh, include it. I mean, get it on the website, sure. In fact, it can be sent out, you can send it out via email blast. Our problem is, is, is the list of names is still a growing proposition. It does not, it's not gonna reach, you know, I, Tom, what would it reach, twenty-five percent?
We have a hundred and ten people receiving email, emails from town offices.
Town offices.
That's it?
That's it.
Of the twelve hundred...
The transportation department has about four hundred and fifty people receiving communication. They've expressed interest in that.
Wow.
Jan will put it on her blog, too, if you want. A lot of people, we find a lot of people using it on.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good way.
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Well, Ray, I, I apologize for my part in, in this miscommunication.
No.
And I don't know what we can do to make sure that we communicate better, but all of a sudden this thing was...
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't, no apologies are required. I mean, I think...
And I felt like I had to do something. But I think good communications between us is, should be a real, real priority.
Yeah, I, I agree and there's no apology required, I don't believe, but I think, I think we've all developed in our own mind a clearer understanding of positions.
They're all different.
Well, well, I think, at least it's, it's different than when we started, that's for sure. And my concern all along was I didn't want the planning board to, to appear that, we have to stay objective or else we could be accused of having predetermined the outcome of any application. So that's a fine line we, we have to walk, in my mind. And I think that's a little clearer in my mind now. And I think the results of this study will, uh, allow us to go back and really look at the zoning and, and make some changes.
Yeah, I, I think that I give you all a lot of credit for putting together an RFP and working hard to select the right people and I hope you convince the townspeople that it's really in the long-term interest of the community to get this study done and get the information that you need to make sure that your zoning regulations support your master plan.
Anything else along those lines? I'll let Harry do a two-minute, let me, man, report.
Oh, okay.
Two minutes.
Well, it might, yeah, it might be more than that.
Two minutes, I bet.
It might be just a bit more.
Could, could I ask, Harry? Does this mean David's not coming?
Uh, David has the flu and he's, well, he might be sort of semi-recovered and he said Nathan had the flu. And, uh, so he's been really busy and sick and just couldn't...
We don't wanna hear it.
We don't want the flu?
It's okay, we don't wanna hear it.
Too much time in the wetlands, right?
I guess. He got his feet wet.
Got his feet wet.
Too mu, too much time seeing sick people. I mean, so, uh, you know, we did get the report, uh, from Stony Ridge Environmental on January twenty-seventh. And, um, this is the report and we've been... And, um, this is the report, and we've been kinda trying to see it, you know, one of us at a time, so David was the only one that really had a chance to review what I got this a few days ago. And I've been doing my best to work my way through it. Um, and and right now, I, what I, what I've come away with so far is that this is more complicated than you might think. Um, so I think we're gonna, before we get a really comprehensive presentation to the planning board, I think each of the commission members is going to need to take some time and really go into this in depth, and we're gonna need a couple of meetings, um, commission meetings, to try to come up with a a way to present this and and really understand the value of it, uh, in in the future planning. So, uh, basically, what I learned from it so far is that Waterville Valley is very unique in in its, uh, wetland structure, because we are a valley completely surrounded by, um, mountains and steep hills and drainages coming down all over the place, which ultimately make their way through, uh, developed areas, residential areas, recreational areas. Um, they then come into the floor of the valley, and they work their way ultimately into Corcoran's Pond, uh, the Mad River and the West Branch. And so the health of the valley floor, and this ties in so much with the future planning as well, uh, the health of the valley floor is going to be somewhat determined by how we deal with the drainages that come off the mountains and how we handle them. And, um, so what surprised me a little bit about the report was the macro nature of the wetlands. I anticipated that we're gonna s- have a, uh, come out of this with a map that shows li- like a half acre of wet area over here, or ten acres over there, or, you know, uh, in- instead, what they came out with was really large areas that they're calling defining wetlands. And the map that we're ultimately going to get from them, um, outlines the high bank, the high water levels, and the extent from creek banks and whatever of the various wetlands around town. And they identified, uh, ten, really twelve wetlands, but they combined three into one. So it ended up coming down to ten distinct wetland areas. And, um, so what I'm gonna do is just, for today, I'm just gonna give you a brief description of the wetland areas, so you have some idea what they're talking about. So, wetland one was the Snow's Brook Trail System, east of Corcoran Pond. And, uh, so that's the area, uh, coming down.
East would be, going which way?
Which would be to the, okay.
To the, below the dam or above the dam?
It's it's it's, it's, it's above the dam, and it's before the water flow comes into Corcoran Pond, upstream.
Okay. Gotcha. Upstream.
It's upstream.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, wetland two was Flat Mountain Road and the field at the corner of Village and Valley. So, that big field, is my understanding of it, is the big field that used to be the golf course?
Yeah.
Is is part of this, uh, wetland two.
It's a wetland study area, not a wetland.
Yeah.
They they they, those are study areas, is that, that's the way I understood it.
No, this. Oh, s- see, I I didn't understand it that way. I understood it, uh, you may be right, I don't, I'm, that's why we have to absorb this a little better.
Sorry, you're.
That's all right, no, no problem. I I took it to say that this is a wetland, but that's a question we're gonna have to put to them now. That's a exactly right, it's a, it's a good question. Um, area, area three.
What, what's, what's a wetland study area?
Well, Bill is the one that brought that up, that's an area they looked at to see if it was a, a wetland.
Yeah. My interpretation is they built it, they broke it down into drainage systems that come through town.
Right, that was my understanding.
It's a drainage system, yeah.
Wouldn't they look at everything to see if there was a problem?
Well, they, that's what I said, they did look at everything, they looked at the entire five hundred acres.
Yeah, they, they broke it up.
Okay.
And they identified boundaries.
Right.
And I think Ray is correct, in identifying those drainage areas.
And in a drainage system.
All right, they didn't distinguish a little pond or a little wet area that might have a salamander from, you know, and within that, they, they just called this whole drainage system.
So, so when, so when you just said that last area, which used to be the golf course, the, was that the, uh, sixth hole? I think, going to the ice arena?
Yeah.
Um, are you saying that entire parcel, or? We don't know.
They def- we don't know at this point, they define, they they specifically mention in the report
Okay.
the, uh, the little drainages that come across the road through the culverts and run down alongside the, the, the open grassy area.
Yes. Okay.
So, um, the next area was Snow's Mountain Road and the ski slope, the old ski slope. Um, then there was, uh, a s- the s- the cemetery area to the Mad River, ending at the bridge on West Branch Road, that was a, a, a specific drainage, drainage five, or a wetland five. It says general locations of wetland system, is how they titled it, Bill.
You've got that picture that shows the, the wetland area.
Right, I'm, I have the, I'll take the big one out, yeah, okay, right. Then there was, um, another one was the West Branch and Mad River from the bridge over to the White Mountain National Forest. Um, and then so.
Wait, wait, oh, oh, that's a pretty.
It's a big area.
These are. Are you basically saying from the bridge to the White Mountain National Forest is a wet, is is a wetland study area?
It's, it's.
It's a westl- wetland system.
It's a wetland system, a, a drainage system.
It sounds to me like.
Wetland system, which is really saying is a system.
It sounds to me like they're defining drainage areas, and everywhere is a drainage area.
Right.
There's no place that's not.
Yeah, 'cause water rains and, rain comes on everywhere.
All towns, dry drains.
Right.
So these are drainage areas, these aren't wetlands, right?
Right, they're drainage areas.
That, that's the way it seems like, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, I didn't so far see any place in it where it defines a specific wetland area as a wetland.
As we would apply the zoning regulations, the wetlands being a piece of designated land that's determined to be a, an official wetland.
That needs to be protected.
By a, a wetland expert, and you can't build on it.
Yeah. Right.
That would be odd definition.
That would be from the planning board perspective, right.
So that's why I say that these are really drainage areas.
And 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 is it fair to say those would conform with state regulations?
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
That that the state has defined what what the criteria you ought to be looking at to apply that.
For, right.
Yeah, and they u- they used a system called the New Hampshire System, which is an, an official scientific system endorsed by the state for defining what a wetland system is. And, uh, let's see, uh, so, but the area ten, uh, the next one was the, uh, from the settling ponds, um, the wat- the water treatment, um, going, there's a little creek that runs through there that they're calling the system that runs, curves around to, what, Tecumseh Road, and, uh, on the other side to Valley Road. Um, then the Noon Peak Road area, including the Athletic Center, was another drainage system, and then finally Corcoran Pond by itself, as a, as a drainage system. So, um, then, after that, they took each of these areas and they, um, evaluated them for twelve different, um, functions, ecological functions. So, um, s- some, I'm, I'm only gonna bring up a couple right now, uh, because I think they're important uh, to understand how the drainage system works. But, uh, one of the really important ones was, uh, f- floodwater storage. And they did comment that there's very limited areas that has, uh, provides floodwater storage. And so one particular one would be that, that area, um, near the river, uh, behind High Country, would be an area where during a flood event, that you, uh, that area would maybe, um, alleviate some of the flooding downstream, because so, some of the water could build up and be held in that area. And there was another one up, um, by the Triple I Road Bridge, um, in there that they found, that was a flat area where that could hold some water. But the point they made was, it's really important not to eliminate these, uh, floodwater storage areas, because that would increase water damage downstream and increase the volume of water flowing downstream. So, that was one of the points I took away from it. Um, another area was groundwater recharge. In other words, um, we have aquifers, and how does, how do those aquifers get recharged? And most of the soil and and gravel in this town, uh, is permeable, and so, um, it's, it's valuable for recharging the aquifers. So, uh, that, that's a good thing, I think. Um, sediment trapping was another major issue, and they found quite a few defects, um, on, in the Snow's Mountain Trail System, um, where the culverts are undersized and washing out, and it's causing sediment to wash down into Corcoran's Pond, so that every so often, w- the town is gonna have to, you know, spend, uh, a lot of money, uh, you know, clearing the sediment out of the pond. And some suggestions about what could be done, um, over time to alleviate those problems by fixing the culverts and the drainages up on, around the trail system. So, um, that's a good thing. And then, uh, the fourth, the fourth one was, uh, shoreline anchoring. And that means the shrubbery around the river and the West Branch and the, and Corcoran's Pond. Um, the more that shrubbery there is around there, the, uh, better it prevents erosion and, uh, washing away of the shorelines. So that's something to keep an eye on and that we need to evaluate areas for. So, um, other than that, I I think we have to take, take our time and, uh, really understand this and bring all the questions, including that one, um, to the, uh, so, to the Stony Ridge Environmental and and put together a really comprehensive understanding of it to present to the planning board and answer all these questions. And that's gonna take, I'm sure, a couple of months to get that implemented.
Um, i- it it sounds from your brief description, I know, Harry, that you haven't had a chance to study this, what they've, what they've really, relative to wetlands, have defined is areas that potentially might have wetlands on them. A- am I misinterpreting that, or?
No, that's part of it.
And, but, did they, in the course of doing this, at all say, well, and this is one of those, here's a place?
I haven't seen that yet.
You haven't, okay, but it might be in there, but you're not sure.
Might be.
And i- and if it's not, we ought to ask them for some guidance along those directions.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I mean, something that's prone to, I don't know what we do with that, uh, I, you know, other than, I, well, I mean, we we have to be careful about building correct drainage systems, I guess, if we built on them, but, um, okay.
Correct. Correct, no, I I I view this as a tool, a, just another tool that the planning board ultimately can use uh, when evaluating an application, uh, for some piece of property, for whatever the purpose, that we can, uh, maybe incorporate the results of this study in our thinking.
Right.
And and determining, um, if, is there some har- real serious harm to the environment and to the drainages uh, by allowing this to go forward, or, or what modifications should we request?
So, it it would kinda be along the lines of, okay, you're, you're, it looks like you're asking to build in an area that has been designated as a potential wetlands area, you need to go hire, you need to go get someone to find out whether you've got any of those on your property or not?
I don't know if that's the case, uh, uh, I think it's almost more that, um, if if you put a structure right here, uh, you're taking away, um, a natural drainage area and, uh, creating a situation where there's gonna be more sediment runoff, so in order to avoid that, you're gonna have to do X, Y, Z.
Okay.
I think what it does is it, it identifies areas where, if they're going to be developed, that you might ask for a drainage study for that development. That's what a drainage study would do, it would go through the culvert sizing and the drainage area and the wetlands and so forth.
Mm-hmm, okay, yeah, all right.
So I think that's what it would do, it was trigger, it would trigger it.
Right, so it just needs to be incorporated in the process somehow.
But, Harry, so, but in, in the vein of truth in advertising, so this is called a wetlands mapping report, but it doesn't actually map any wetlands, I think we should rename it.
So far, I haven't seen it, I haven't seen it so far.
Honestly?
There's a lot of pages there.
There's a lot of pages.
Yeah, so, I mean, if it doesn't actually tell us where the wetlands are, we should call it a drainage mapping report or something else, just 'cause it's, it's not.
Well, we should go back and answer the map.
Or, or extended, yeah, extended, to the point, that's what the original intent was.
Yeah.
Because that's what they, I thought they delivered to commit, they committed to deliver.
Yeah, 'cause I, I mean, I, I think that's.
Well, perhaps they did, we don't know that yet.
Perhaps they did, I, I mean, I, I, one of the things I asked them for already is to, um, a map,
Okay.
to give us a map outlining all these areas, but without all the background satellite information in it, uh, that's really distracting, I have a really hard time understanding the, these topographical maps with, um, the, the nuances and the shades of color on them, and and they're saying, this is, this color is area one, this color is area two, and it's all confused with the trees and the mountains and the, uh, shadowing, um, it becomes very difficult, so I asked them if they could get rid of all that background stuff and just give us the basic tax map, you know, the streets and roads and s- and buildings, and and on that, give us the outline of the areas.
So basically, kinda like that map behind you.
That they're talking about. So something more like that, yeah.
So we don't have that yet, so, so the areas you talked about, that's why you couldn't just show, 'cause, yeah, 'cause I'm a visual person, so it would've helped to.
We don't have that yet.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we don't have it yet.
Okay, well, thank you.
You've got your work cut out, or?
Yeah, that's.
Definitely.
It's, it's, it looks really big.
It's their time reading there.
That's, that's yesterday.
I know, I saw you boring over there.
Nancy walked, when Nancy walked out yesterday, last night, uh, the book club thing, that's what I was doing, I was sitting at the dining room table reading.
Yeah, I was hoping that wasn't planning board's stuff.
It's about page and I. And then you read the whole thing, you realize you haven't read anything.
So, okay.
Thank you, Harry.
You're welcome.
I didn't think you were gonna give that in-depth report.
Well, until we get done reading it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing I will do.
Yeah, I'm envy, happy to read that.
Just to see it.
Well, there are, man.
There, there's this, which.
Wait, you got some big, you got the big ones?
This is a big one, which we can pass around or take a look at, so.
But actually, maybe they actually presented, and maybe there's a different way of reading, thinking about this. And it's identifying those areas where if you're going to develop or build, you know, increased drainage study seems to be done.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, I mean, here's an area called a possible wetland, but we probably should.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's here, right?
Gatherer boat.
Right, so there's. Yeah, yeah, there's a new area right there, right?
And it's like.
Right, so that would be a, that would be a wetland, I presume.
That, yeah, isn't that over by the, uh, Athletic Center, between the Athletic Center and the.
Don't sit down, Harry, I'm such a chair.
But all, okay.
That's wet, over there.
That's okay, yeah. And so, th- there are, I guess these green things are, yeah, they actually have it on here.
Yeah.
Wetlands.
I didn't even ask, look at this last night, this gr- the green lines outline what they're calling wetlands.
Yeah.
Okay.
Here?
Right.
Yeah.
So we have to fully understand whether you are.
Yeah, that's okay.
No, okay.
There's, there's a couple of little ones up here, down here, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Here?
Right.
It's not like stone, you know, that wooden brook?
Right, that little brook that runs back behind Forest Hill.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's called the Trail.
In Old Town, right? Well, it's got that, it's got some stuff in it.
So.
Yeah.
There, there's some up here.
And it's terrible, coming out the corner.
Yeah, but it's natural, right.
Up here between the West Branch and the Mad River, just up those parts. The whole area where the Mad River Trail is, basically a flood plain and a wetland.
Yeah. No, and their point about not cutting the vegetation along the edge of those streams, most of those edge of the streams are designated, eh, I think, as green zones, and they're, and and in the case of the Mad River, it's controlled by the state. You're not supposed to be cutting anything along the edge of those streams.
Right. Right. Right.
And, uh, as rail, rail players are fishing in, I mean, you gotta, you gotta have that junk thrown in, right?
It's just the Mad River, yeah. Fly to it, debris.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what a fish hides?
Absolutely.
Well, they fall in, eventually fall in the streams, right, great habitat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it gives shade, so it doesn't warm up.
Right.
And the nice thing about this study is it shows all the, all these culverts.
Culverts, yeah, it's good.
The black lines here, the culverts.
Yeah.
All right, good, well, maybe they did more than that.
So I think we're gonna end up getting more information out of it as we study.
So, seriously.
Right, okay, yeah.
Cause the viewer is, it hasn't been that, right?
Yeah.
It is marginal.
But it's just really difficult to uh, well, for me anyway, to to block out the background noise.
But you're right, the next uh tested from them will be a little bit more, uh it'll be easier to view and.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would make it an addition to that as opposed to replacing it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Right.
Oh wow.
Are there actually contours on that?
I don't think so.
I don't see any, no.
I don't see any contours. Cause the contours can tell you, at least the drainage, you know, where the.
Well, we have, we have a topographic map for it as well.
Yeah, right.
For the contours, which is the same scale.
And the interesting thing is they broke it down into those twelve different areas and they assigned numbers to them and then have all assigned by this New Hampshire's guidance or whatever, New Hampshire method.
The New Hampshire method, yeah.
And it's pretty interesting on some.
Right.
What you may ask them to do, Harry, is when you ask them to do the um map with the outlines of the wet areas and so forth, that doesn't have the background in it,
Mm-hmm.
wonder if they could overlay the contours on that.
Good idea.
Well, you're gonna meet next Monday, right?
Next Monday.
And talk about the.
We're gonna do all these suggestions and.
Uh I assume uh planning board members are would be invited to that.
Absolutely.
In case anybody wants to go in.
And uh.
I thought one of the things that was missing in that study was an executive summary. You know, wading through all of that stuff, trying to analyze it as an amateur, I thought was really, really difficult.
Yes.
Um and the woman who was the head of that study certainly would be capable of writing a three or four page executive summary
Yeah.
that would tell you maybe prioritize what you need to look at.
Yeah.
That'd be really helpful.
I think the better explanation of those numbers and what they really mean and what the categories are.
Harry, do you have a time for next Monday? I mean, is that al- already?
It's nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock on Monday morning?
And is it here?
It's here.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Let's see, we've got communications, they don't have anything, committee reports.
We um made our presentation at the budget hearing and um I think a lot of you were there, but it seemed to go pretty well. Um but a few questions afterwards that we're just gonna be able to incorporate to make um our next presentation even clearer, so. Uh, did you have anything you wanted to add, Nancy?
No, I think that's pretty much it, it was, it was a pretty friendly, mostly friendly audience.
Yeah. I think that's about what we're at. Wasn't a huge group with the weather that night.
Yeah, small.
And yeah, as as we mentioned earlier, we have a phone conversation signed with Mark Kane to
Mm-hmm.
see where, what he needs to be involved with to uh help us move along.
Are you gonna use the same slides?
Uh with some additional slides as well.
Cause somebody made a comment to me that uh maybe we shouldn't get into how how we picked uh SE.
Okay. That's fine.
I mean, what are your thoughts on that?
Meaning that we evaluated several.
No, that you spent a lot of time talking about how we how we selected SE.
Too much time about. I think our concern was that we wanted people to know we did our due diligence this year, instead of just throwing a number out there like we kind of did last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think the the the, some of the people I talked, the questions they hit me with are, you know, what is this thing?
So that that was the point.
And why do we have to do it and why do we have to do it now? You know, they they're they're at a much higher level, they're not concerned so much about who's doing the work.
Yeah. Who's doing it, right.
Why are we doing the work and what are the outputs from it, you know, what are we gonna get out of this? And they they said, and a lot of people are saying, well, wait a minute now, why do we have to do this now? Why don't we wait for the developer who's gonna come and save us and then we'll do the stuff? And 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 it's too late then, that's the problem, you know, it's the part of work he's doing.
Right.
Right.
Right, but that's, but let's answer that at a later time.
It's too late, yeah, I mean, you're gonna.
Yeah.
It it takes months and you have to do it over seasons.
Right, I mean, you can't change the regulations after, you know, after the guy comes.
Right, right.
If you're gonna change, you're gonna take that. So anyway, I think there was some feedback.
Okay, yeah, if any feedback or questions that anyone hears, so if you can point them our way, we'd agree.
Right.
Yeah, and then Nancy had a good point about passing the common sense test too, I thought that was.
Yeah, 'cause that's, that's always underlying everybody's thought process.
Right. You know, I think those two things should be emphasized rather than how we pick SE, cause I don't think people are asking how we pick that.
No, I don't think so, I don't think.
Okay.
Well, and you you have the explanation in case someone asks afterward, that we could always answer that.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
And maybe while we're on this subject, let me, let's, we should clarify some, 'cause it appears that, and again, maybe it's a communication problem. The um, we've got the transportation committee that went through the process of selecting who is gonna do the work, all right? And and I think it was about two or three planning board meetings ago, we decided to appoint a group that was basically a representative of the planning board, the selectmen, the mountain, and Bill Cantland to sit, to get together and put together a plan of how we were gonna present this. And 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 we met minus the mountain and at that time decided we tried, well, it wasn't on the twenty first and the meeting got canceled. But anyway, it was to try to have an overall presentation where the results of their work would be presented. And then we had also agreed at that time to try to do this, put together a presentation that would run concurrent with the voting process. It's not really a presentation, it's more a walkthrough, uh which is how Ray and I got involved in our name on that letter, all right? Uh because we were the ones that had met with Bill and and I was really representing the, really representing the planning board. So I just wanna make sure going forward that, uh, cause I've been working on putting together the outline of what that walkthrough would be from the standpoint of explaining what is a pedestrian village, why are we concerned about this now, what do we wanna get out of it? And I I don't know whether the best thing is to send, at this stage, send you what I have? I mean, it's it's not finished, I mean, it's in, but and get the benefit of my thinking and then you work with Mark Kane, what do you wanna, I I don't wanna.
Can you stay afterward, 'cause we we have a meeting scheduled.
I I can stay till nine thirty, that's it.
Okay.
This morning, but I can send you what I got.
Yeah, 'cause I think this whole communication thing, I thought you were get, guys were discussing more presenting the waterville company and not necessarily the.
Yeah.
Both.
Okay.
And now, we had talked, well, it was at that meeting we decided that uh we were only gonna be able to do the one presentation and for 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 residents, they needed more information, so we said, hey, look, well, you know, what we'll try to do is we're only, you can't, you can't present it as the warrant article comes up, 'cause you only get ten minutes. So we said, well, let's do it ahead of time, we'll try to do a a continuously running roadshow of some type that if people had questions, they could get those questions answered as to why we're doing this.
Yeah.
Can we?
But I'd be more than, I'll be more than glad to send you what I have.
Yeah, we've already put in so many hours, it'd be, makes sense to keep us in the loop of that.
Okay, all right, it makes sense, all right, yeah.
Can we present?
Well, no, but are you gonna take the lead then in terms, someone's gotta put that roadshow together?
Well, this is.
You know, and it's more than just Mark and, Mark has got, Kane can explain what they're gonna do, but he can't explain the rationale of why, why do we have to do this study now? Someone's gotta put that together and uh at least I believe you do, you know, to be able to convince people, this is something we need to do now. What is it and we need to do it now?
Is it gonna be set up in the entryway?
I don't know where we'll set it up, it's set up in a corner of the gym probably.
Cause there's rules about where you can walk, and I don't know whether this is convenient.
Yeah, but the gym is big enough, you can fence off an air, you know, they can kind of chain in a section of the cha- or or we'll put it in a multipurpose room, I know, and the school is in session and they got all kinds of rules now about what you can and can't do.
Right.
So my guess would be we'll be in the gym, but we'll put a section up and, you know, and the thought was maybe we'd make up some, you know,
Yeah, I think.
three by, you know, big beaver boards with text on it.
Placards.
I think the big placards will.
Placards and then just have people there that can walk people through it, you know.
Yeah, and make bullets maybe, just other things that are are very important that
Yeah, it's a bullet point thing. Right.
This is why we're doing it, blah, 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 all the way down.
Yeah.
Well, I think the big plackets will get people's attention, they'll see something.
Well, I just wanna be, that we're clear on who's gonna do that, I mean, the town will make the the materials up, but we've gotta, somebody's gotta take ownership, I'm gonna write these things, um.
Well, why don't we talk about it after this meeting, 'cause we we can't, I don't think we should decide on the fly, right?
All right, all right, I'll, then what I'll do is I'll send you what you want, if you need, if you need my help, then, you know, get ahold of me, but if not, I'm assuming that you'll put them together and.
Yeah, cause we don't have any more meetings between now and town town meetings.
Right. Right. Right, unless, unless.
Are we, are we?
But I'll send these out and I'll send out my thoughts to Alicia this afternoon.
In this um presentation or informational area, uh are we attempting to um get information out that we've consulted with Waterville Company and the mountain? Or are you going to incorporate them into this, 'cause I think it's.
I'm completely. I am divorcing them.
Yeah, right.
Pardon?
I am deliberately now divorcing the mountain and the waterville company.
Yeah, 'cause I think we need to have a clear separation.
And saying, this is something that the planning board and the board of selectmen have decided to do.
This is the town.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Then we'd have.
Now, they're part of the story, I mean, we're doing this because we believe that revitalization of the ski area is crucial to the, to the, to the town.
No, no, I thought.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
I mean, but that's in the master plan, it says the same thing.
So we would have to man it from eleven to three.
Well, you know, you got, firstly, you got, as a selectman, I'm gonna be there anyway, I gotta be there anyway the whole day, right, so.
You're gonna be there the whole day?
I have to, by law.
Well, somebody does have to be.
Oh, good.
Somebody's gotta be there, right.
Right.
So you you'd be able to talk to it and then if we could show up also.
And and Marcus said he would come.
Okay.
When I talked to him yesterday, he said he's going, so on his calendar, he's prepared to come from eleven till after the town meeting. So he'll talk about what they're doing.
Is there any risk with that since we haven't signed a contract with them, the town doesn't have any contract with them? He would just, they were essentially part of our process to get a number, I'm, I mean, it'd be a selling process.
So this is a part of the selling process.
Well, I think he understands that if if they vote this down, he doesn't have any work to do.
But I I think.
Cause I told him that, I said, the problem is this got turned down last time, you know, you, you know, this is, you know, this is not a given that people are gonna leap on this, so.
I think the other thing you have to do though, like if you're gonna be there or part of the day and maybe another selectman comes in or Mark's there part of the day.
Or representatives of the planning board, I absolutely.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I think the information from the different individuals needs to be very consistent. Because somebody's gonna say, well, Mark told me this and Bill told me that.
That's why you wanna, you wanna put some. Nah, you wanna have some plot, you and I have some boards that are storyboards, that you can walk somebody through the storyboard
Right.
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 Exactly.
so that everybody's telling the same story.
Exactly, that's the important part.
And I think somebody from the committee should be there, and I don't know, are you gonna work out a schedule and?
Absolutely. I just don't wanna, I just wanna make sure that we're on the same wavelength.
We'll have to figure it out, yeah.
Have to work out this, yeah.
Kind of the first part, you're ready, go.
Yeah. Yes, this is the first we're hearing about, we'll have to talk about it after this meeting.
Exactly, yeah.
Cause I think.
Well, I'll, I'll, we have to stay open.
Maybe we could just uh pre-print an X in the.
In the yes section?
Well, this is a.
The hanging Chad.
This is a um, this is a, basically just a, a meeting, it's voted on in the meeting.
Right.
And one of the things you you ought to figure out is whether you wanna, whether it'd be to our advantage to have it as a secret ballot or not as a secret ballot. Because if you want it as a secret ballot, and it then you have to, someone's gotta introduce it as a motion to make it.
There's a reason to do that, yeah.
What are the pros and cons, like, I I I don't really know, is it relatively pass secret, secret, and actually?
Um, u- usually, if if you can get a vi- uh i- i- you know, it depends on the subject. A lot of people are nervous about turning down motions that they think their neighbor think would judge them unfairly if they voted against it.
That's true.
So I, my feeling is more people tend to vote positive if it's an open ballot, than if it's a.
I'm I'm.
Open ballot, I agree.
Yeah, I would think so too.
Okay, let's not make it secret.
That'd be my feeling, but it, on this one, I'm not so sure about it, I don't, I'm not sure it makes any difference, but.
Well, we can make that decision just before town meeting.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, right.
Okay.
Because I would take with somebody with a written motion to, and I think it has to be seconded or some such, it's pretty easy.
Right. Yeah, and and then it's just, it'd be a show of hands whether they want a secret ballot.
See how the morning goes too.
Yeah.
Okay, Penny?
I just hope that this time around, they don't, you know, we do a a a good job so people just don't focus on money.
Oh, they don't, they.
You know, 'cause to us, it's extremely important and.
We had this bogged down last time, it was, you know, 'cause I think we, I know the board of selectmen tried to explain it and you got into, well, the parking, you know, oh, we're minimal whistled stalls. This i- i- if you focus on that.
Yeah.
It'll get turned down again.
And I think it depends on who shows up.
Yeah.
But please don't say, we're gonna find out who owns the parking lots.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Why don't we just say it's, we're a committee, not even a transportation committee, it's not associated with transportation.
Yeah, we know who owns the parking.
No, I know it.
We know who owns the parking lots, we we know that they're not being fixed, it's just that we are not doing anything, you know, we're not as a town doing anything to correct it.
We're a committee for this, yeah.
I think if you uh presented as, um, we know there's gonna be development in this toward um keeping it under control.
Right, absolutely, that's the, and why you need to do it now.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
That's worth it. Right.
Well, there is development.
Because it doesn't do any good, once the, you know, 'cause once a developer walks in, it'd be, you know, it's the existing regulations, not the, not the thoughts of what you might have.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
And they should know that we, we keep, as a planning board, we keep dealing with issues that, you know, there isn't anything to guide us.
Day late and a dollar short, you need to address it now.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
I see it as validation of our master plan.
Right.
I mean, we do have a master plan.
Yeah. It it also relates to increased assessed value in town and the long-term economic viability of the community, those are.
Those should be issues that are important to people right now.
Exactly.
That's always the, one of the real questions, a couple of people ask me, you know, why, you know, in any of these grandiose plans, how do you pay for these things? And and the answer to that question, if you could increase assessed valuation by ten percent, you could pay for a lot.
Anything else on that subject? Privilege of the floor?
Thank you very much.
Have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn. Second?
Go ahead, favor?
Hi.
When you make sure.
I have a general interest.